Let's call the meeting to order. Of the City of Milton and its amended common council meeting agenda. Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six oh one P M. And can I get appropriate or confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Hometown Ace Hardware.
Thank you, and we have a swearing in. Of elected officials tonight. Kind of exciting. So Jenny's in charge.
So. The first one is Mayor Anisa Welch, and Anisa, would you like to go out in the front?
Yep.
And so we can, I think it can take some pictures.
I don't have to re-
You just have to repeat and-
I hold anything in my hand?
So to ensure everyone in the audience and then on at home is able to hear it, then we'll be using this microphone. We'll be sharing it. So if you want to repeat after me or read it off there is I state your name.
Anisa M. Welch.
Anisa M. Welch. Having been elected as mayor of the City of Milton.
Having been elected as mayor of the City of Milton.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Then we have three council members that are going to be sworn in and they've requested to do it as a group. So it's Teresa Rouge, Bill Wilson, and Charlotte Walker. The whole left side of the room, yes. So we'll go a little slow so that everyone can um talk at the same time. Okay, okay, no, goodness gracious. I state your name.
I, Charlotte Walker.
Teresa Rouge.
Bill Wilson.
Having been elected as common council alderperson.
Having been elected as common council alderperson.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities.
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yeah, would you like any additional pictures at this time?
Well, just the pictures after.
All right, next we have some council business and we have the election of the common council president. So how this usually takes place is somebody um nominates and then. They, is there, I can't remember now, is there a second or is there just an acceptance?
There's a second.
There's a second, okay, a nomination.
I would nominate Eric Stockman.
Is there a-
Second that.
Oh. And then does um Eric accept the nomination or?
I don't think he has a choice.
Okay. So this is forced governance.
Yeah, I think-
Eric, is there, well, first of all, do you accept the nomination?
I'll accept the nomination, thank you.
Okay, okay, well, we're gonna vote on it too, or you're gonna, you guys are gonna vote on it too. Is there um anybody else or any other nominations? Any other nominations? This is the last time I'm gonna ask for any other nominations. All right, and then um. We, in the past, we've done it by secret ballot, right? And our attorney is shaking his very knowledgeable head, saying that that's how we'll do it again. I wonder who'll get voted in? Well, you know what a rule follower I am. Does Eric get to vote for himself or does he have to abstain? Oh, he should vote for himself. A suspect? That's right, I don't get to vote yet. Okay, what is the tally?
Well, there's one that says E, so I'm gonna take that as Eric.
I don't know who knows him as E.
However, there is six is Eric Stockman and that is it.
So Eric Stockman is the new council president? Add four more meetings to your monthly agenda, congratulations. Please see Al after the meeting.
All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have an agenda, a pledge of allegiance. Well, I think our new council president should lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments? Do we have anybody signed up for public comments? Okay. No, he is just an observer tonight. I mean, that's what he said.
So you just talked, but-
He's taking sure we follow the rules tonight. Okay, so. There are some months that are a little bit busier than other months around uh proclamations and resolutions. And this month is one of those months that there's um a lot of resolutions and proclamations. And we like to bring awareness to various um issues and. Resolutions that are important and support the mission, vision, and values of um the council, of the city, and of our strategic plan. Because there's so many. Tonight, I have asked um counsel for assistance. And if you weren't assigned something this month, there's other months. And don't think that you won't be assigned later, or please don't feel bad that you weren't assigned. Um so I'm gonna read a couple. And then other people have just had pieces of papers put in front of their places with their names on it and assigned something. Um, so. The first one is proclamation of infertility awareness week, April twenty-third through the twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas according to the C D C, one in eight couples have trouble getting pregnant or sustaining a pregnancy. And whereas the World Health Organization and American Medical Association define infertility as a disease. And whereas infertility affects women and men equally and does not discriminate based on race, religion, sexual orientation. Marital status or socio-economic level. And whereas LGBTQ community also faces challenges when building their families. And whereas all people challenged in their family-building journey should have access to all family-building options. And whereas family-building options include adoption and medical treatment such as in vitro fertilization. And third-party reproduction. And whereas cost and lack of insurance coverage are barriers for many in the City of Milton to access the family-building option they need. And whereas the City of Milton joins to resolve the National Infertility Association and dedicated volunteers. Healthcare professionals and members of the infertility and family-building community by participating in this promotion. Now therefore, I, Anisa Mayor, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton. Do hereby proclaim April twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as National Infertility Awareness Week. And the next proclamation is Arbor Day.
Arbor Day, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture. That a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs. Moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the City of Milton does hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the City of Milton. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the earth and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you, and the City of Milton is still a tree city, correct? Tree City, USA, so thank you very much for that proclamation. The next one is National Volunteer Week.
National Volunteer Week, April sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the City of Milton is proud of the volunteers that serve our community to ensure Milton is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. And whereas the city is certain Milton's volunteers are the greatest asset to the community. And whereas Milton has numerous community organizations supported by volunteers. And the City of Milton has committees, commissions, and boards run by volunteers, including. The Board of Review, Community Development Authority, Ethics Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Library Board. Parks and Recreation Commission, Police Commission, Public Works Committee, and Zoning Board of Appeals. And whereas the City of Milton celebrates the individuals who contribute to the community. And whereas each year a special week is designated in our nation for the dual purpose of recognizing those. Who give of themselves and of encouraging all community members to become involved in volunteer work. And it is fitting at this time that we say thank you to all the individuals, groups, and businesses. Who have given time, energy, and resources to their communities through volunteer service. Now therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City. Do hereby proclaim April sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, as National Volunteer Week in the City of Milton. And encourage our community members to celebrate and thank all of the volunteers serving our community and. Further, I urge all community members to explore volunteer opportunities with our community nonprofit organizations. The City of Milton, the Milton Public Library, and the School District of Milton. Signed this day. Eighteenth day of April, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Okay, and going on to National Library Week.
National Library Week is April twenty-third to twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-three. Whereas the first National Library Week was observed in nineteen fifty-eight to encourage reading. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore innovative ideas. Become their best selves through free access to books, technology, multimedia content, workforce development, and educational programs. And whereas libraries promote equity and of access to resources for people regardless of age, ability, racial identity. Ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, citians citizenship, income level, or educational background. And whereas libraries support the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities. And play an invaluable role in supporting and connecting community members. Now therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim National Library Week, April twenty-third to the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. During this week and every week, I encourage all residents to connect with the Milton Public Library. By visiting in person or online to access all their free resources and services.
Thank you very much. And we will move on to approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. All right, that motion carries. Twelve, right, am I right, on twelve? Okay, discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-three oh eight. Proclaiming April third thirtieth through May seventh, a small business week, and Linda Clark has that resolution to read.
Okay. Resolution proclaiming April thirtieth to May seven, a small business week. Whereas small businesses across America have shaped and embodied the entrepreneurial spirit. And driven our economy forward for generations. And whereas more than thirty-two million small businesses employ almost half of America's workforce. And represent the heart and soul of countless communities and their enormous contributions to American life and prosperity. And whereas the pandemic devastated America's small business community. Hundreds of thousands of small businesses closed, main streets were shuttered. And millions of more Americans were out of work with no fault of their own. Even with the creative creativity and the resilience of small business owners and workers. COVID nineteen took an incalculable toll on many lives and livelihoods. And whereas the American Rescue Plan and other emergency reef programs distributed hundreds of billions of dollars. To million, millions of small businesses to provide s- substantial immediate relief to our nation's small businesses. Giving them the tools, resources, and support they need to reopen, rehire, rebuild, and also remove historical bearers. To level the playing field for businesses across the rural and urban America. Especially businesses owned by veterans, women, and people of color. Whereas the National Small Business Week. Let us renew our commitment to supporting Rock County's small businesses from the local mom-pop shops to the innovative startups. Now therefore may. Be it resolved by the City of Milton Council. Proclaims April thirtieth to May seventh, twenty twenty-three, as Small Business Week. To recognize the contributions of small businesses to the City of Milton's economy. Continuing to su- to support them and honor the occasion with programs and activities and hi- that highlight these important businesses.
I guess we can't say approved yet because we haven't voted on it yet. So I think it's im- um important to acknowledge and highlight um our two downtowns. That are filled with small businesses and entrepreneur entrepreneurship. And it doesn't take away anything from our large corporations or our other commercial entities that we have that also help our community. However, I think um our small businesses help define the uniqueness of the City of Milton. And it's great that we can show them their appreciation. And are there any questions or comments or a motion by council?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Resolution. Twenty twenty-three oh eight, proclaiming April thirtieth to May seventh, Small Business Week. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Say no. All right, that motion carries. As many of you are aware that um. Our City of Milton founder, Joseph Goodrich, was um an abolitionist. And not only was he an abolitionist, he believed. That people of color and enslaved people deserved to be twe- treated equally and provided equal opportunities. Not everybody that was an abolitionist was um also believed in equitable treatment of people of color. But Joseph Goodrich did, and he lived those values. When we were putting together our stra- our strategic plan with all members of council, with our, our Milton community, with our staff. One of our um. Part of our strategic plan was to have an inclusive city. And um that everybody felt that they belonged here. In addition, one of the ways that the City of Milton. Lives out those values is we um are a nonprofit spot sponsor of the Y W C A Rachel Justice Conference. Um that the Y W C A and other um for-profit businesses and other um organizations and municipalities. Support and the Y D, Y W C A holds these uh racial justice conferences throughout the entire state of Wisconsin and in fact. Um the entire. Country and we are proud of that partnership. And that we also include encouraging um not only Milton City staff, but other uh Milton residents. And community members and school district staff to attend. That as um part of living our values of standing up for everyone. But in particular, living our values that Joseph Goodrich founded our city on. Another mission that uh the Y W C A, Y W C A has is promoting equity among women and helping women and children. To be successful and our residents take advantage of the opportunities and the services that the Y W C A. Provides for them as well as the Y W C A. Runs the care house where children that um are victims of abuse or neglect in its various forms. Are taken and provided a safe environment to be interviewed um by caring staff. And what the care house provides is a one-stop interview option. And before the Y W C A had the care house, children would have to go through multiple interview processes. And have to tell their story multiple times to police and social workers and teachers. And that re-traumatized children, having them to relive that abuse. And that's another part of the Y W C A mission. And so I'm going to read resolution twenty twenty-three oh nine. Resolution recognizing April twentieth through two thousand and twenty-three. Um through April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as Stand Against Racism Days. Whereas all residents regardless of race, creed, or ethnicity. Deserve to be treated with dignity, respect, compassion, and justice. And whereas Milton, Wisconsin residents value initiatives that will end race-based disparities. And make the world a more equitable, inclusive, and dignified place for all to live. And whereas the elimination of racism can be achieved only with the participation of all residents and dialogue. Reflection and action. And whereas the mayor and common council support Y W C A, USA. And Y W C A Rock County in its praiseworthy mission to eliminate racism. Empower women, stand up for social justice, help families and strengthen communities. And whereas the residents of Milton, Wisconsin proudly support the Y W C A Rock County in celebration of Stand Against Racism. A signature campaign of Y W C A, USA. To build community among those who work for racial justice and to raise awareness. About the nev- negative impact of institutional and structural racism in our communities. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Milton Common Council hereby declares. Thursday, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, through Thursday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. As Y W C A Rock County Stand Against Racism Days and encourages residents, local businesses. Educators and community and faith-based organizations to celebrate diversity and advocate for the elimination of racism. This is similar to the resolution that we had last year and every year. The Y W C A has a presentation and a small ceremony um and it will be.
Courthouse square noon to one thirty.
This Thursday.
Courthouse on, on Thursday.
On Thursday, and there's also um also a ceremony and presentation in Beloit at the same time. And every year.
The light one is actually on the twenty-seventh.
The Beloit is-
At the other end of the week.
At the other end of the week, so I would strongly encourage anybody that is available to attend the ceremony at the courthouse. I've attended it, I think, every single year that they've had it and they've probably had it four or five years now. Um and it's a great opportunity to meet people from the Y W C A and others in the community that support these causes, so. Is there a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh nine? Is there a second? There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Is there anyone abstaining? All right, that motion carries. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit request for seven ten Campus Street, number twelve.
So Mr. Watkins has uh, who's out in the audience this evening, has provided a conditional use permit application. Uh to operate a, a home business in a residential zoning district. Mr. Watkins eh, his business is to, and he's here so he can answer questions if people have specifics about his business, I don't wanna talk for him. Uh it's, it's one hundred percent online. Uh there's no product that is at his location or shipped to his location or received at his location. It's just done uh through his apartment. He does have permission from the property owner and we have provided that as part of the documentation for the conditional use permit application. Uh a public hearing was held at the planning commission level and there was no one there uh present to speak for or against. Uh there was a lengthy discussion at the planning commission level, uh just so the councils aware about whether uh Mr. Watkins's business actually necessitated. A uh a, a conditional use permit or not. Uh it was viewed by some commissioners that it, it wouldn't fall under the guise of the home occupation. Uh, it was viewed by some commissioners that it it wouldn't fall under the guise of the home occupation uh conditional use permit because there was no business being conducted on the site other than electronically. Uh, as I noted during the Plan Commission, I agree with them. Uh, however, uh based on our ordinances, we felt that it still would require a conditional use permit. So ultimately, what the uh Plan Commission decided was to forward a favorable recommendation to the Common Council uh with the caveat that uh staff would further research this issue with the assistance of Attorney Schrader. And if it is found uh that the interpretation of the ordinance would uh not necessitate Mr. Watkins of getting a CUP, we would issue a refund to him for the two hundred and fifty dollar application fee. Uh, but members of the Plan Commission on the prevailing side felt it was important to keep the process going as to not hold up his business uh and that uh we could issue the conditional use permit, and then if we found out that it wasn't necessary, then just, you know, simply refund him that check and and we go out about our business. So that was the ultimate conclusion that the Plan Commission found, felt that that was uh uh, you know, a a reasonable compromise. Uh, so um once Attorney Schrader gets us that answer, then we'll get you your answer on your conditional use permit. Uh, uh unless the council wants to deny it. So I guess that that purview as well, but uh Mark, you can just get working on that.
So um it doesn't mean that you can't approve the conditional use permit, just so that's clear. It's just
I think the comment that resonated most was what does it hurt to to issue it? If we believe that this type of activity is conducive uh to the neighborhood and that we're okay with this type of business being conducted uh and that the property owner agrees to it, if if we as a as you as a collective group believe it's okay, then what does it hurt to issue it? If if we find out that perhaps, you know, that uh ordinance needs to be revised or has a different interpretation, we would take care of it on our end.
Alright, questions or comments?
I have a comment. Actually, I have a couple of comments. When I first, when I first started to look at this, I guess I probably had the same interpretation as the commissioner. Am I, I'm sure that I know who that is. In any case, um and the reason for that, I believe, is because when this was originally presented, this, this was for the person like my husband that might bring his office home to my house in my neighborhood where there might be traffic, where there's gonna be kids, where there's gonna be people in the neighborhood that my neighbors don't know. That's why I or he or they, whoever, would have to get this. But I mean, realistically, for somebody that's sitting at home on their computer, I just kind of feel like this is just kind of I I don't see the need to do this. What I am actually seeing more the need to do is to check into the ordinance. Um, because one of the things that we need to remember is that everything is electronic. And for Mr. Watson Watkins to come in and say, hey, I'm doing this business at home in my kitchen table. This, what do I need to do? I think that's awesome, but there's a lot of people out there that are not gonna do that, so I think that we definitely need to get this clarified. I guess it, I don't know, do we really need to take a look at this that close at this point in time? If we're already going to be looking in our ordinances, because I just kind of feel like we should just end it right here.
Okay, so there's a couple of questions. We're not debating, I guess, I guess you can ask Mark his opinion, but this is about, are you primarily okay with him conducting this business? And what Al had explained is that you can okay the conditional use permit. If we find that it's overreaching, we can give him back the two hundred and fifty dollars. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just feel like it's
Because we can't just be like, okay, we're not gonna follow this ordinance.
I just feel like it's kind of a waste of everybody's time.
Well, it's on the agenda, so we're gonna deal with it.
So on that note, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve the conditional use permit request for Watkins Group LLC.
I'll second that.
With the stipulation that our staff will look into the um ordinance and with the uh Mark as well.
I will second that.
Alright, so there's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments?
I guess I'll make uh one comment. Uh, when um Ethel and I moved into town almost twenty-five years ago, um, you know, we knew we were going to be doing our consulting business uh out of our home. Uh, no one coming to visit, uh no clients coming and so on. I believe that we did some sort of a registration process. I'm sure there wasn't a conditional use permit. Um, I I bring that up only because I think it's probably a good idea that we encourage people to register, that they're conducting business. Um, if for nothing else, um, you know, as a promotional tool to say we're a good place to do business. Um, because we are, um, you know, great access to physical markets as well as um good electronic access and so on. So um I I'm in support of approving the conditional use permit uh as outlined uh uh and um uh as we look at it, uh maybe considering some sort of a process uh less than the the CUP.
We do have a business permit application.
And that may be what we
Yep, yep, and that that's, there's a nominal fee for that, and the purpose of that is if almost exactly what you said. But it it goes a little step further to help uh public safety, uh understand where businesses are located, and if we need to get word out to businesses about things, we have contact information. So that's probably what you're referring to, and that practice is still in place.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That motion carries. Congratulations. Get back to your computer right away. Okay, discussion and possible action on Residential Exterior Improvement Program grant requests. This is exciting.
Thank you. The Community Development Authority, they met on Monday last week to review four applications that were received for the Residential Exterior Improvement Program for two thousand and twenty-three. Um, two of the applications, one for a roof and one for gutters, those were forwarded to the council for approval, and then two were forwarded for denial. Um, the two that were um recommended for denial just didn't have, didn't raise to the level of blight that the program is aiming to address. And then everything's included in the memo on details on those applications, but if there's any questions, um myself, Jenny, Al, we were all in that meeting.
I was in that meeting too.
Yes, sorry.
Um, any questions or comments?
I think it's great that we have so many people that are still interested in this. It's just great.
Yep, and we still have money available, so um if there, if you can get the word out that there's there's still availability and that we have extended that that deadline, so people can still submit projects. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Mary Boston and Jamie Kidley for the exterior grant improvement applications.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the approval of those applications. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And then do they have to do a motion?
I don't know that we have to, but I think it would be appropriate to do that, in my opinion.
Yep.
I I would agree, otherwise it's just hanging out there, so he might as well have a definitive answer for them.
Yep. Is there another motion?
Okay, I'll make the motion to deny the grant applications for Joseph and Kimberly Mueller and Thomas and Julie Westrick for the purpose of them not being uh
Based on failure to meet the criteria?
To meet the criterion. Very good.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding an amendment to a TIF development agreement with Charter Next Generation.
So last October, the Common Council uh had a a multiple actions regarding the Charter Next Generation project. Uh, for point of reference, Charter Next Generation acquired eighty-eight acres of land in the town of Milton along Vicarman Road. Uh, on the same night that the TIF development agreement was approved, the Common Council annexed that land uh and amended the TIF boundary to include that property within the TIF and approved the TIF development agreement. The hope at the time from Charter Next Generation was to begin construction on their facility yet uh last fall. Uh, due to a a variety of things that have come up uh with that project, to weather, supply chain, uh logistics, engineering, uh they weren't able to start last fall, and they're hoping to start this spring. With that delay in their start, uh it's going to very likely cause them uh to not finish the project in time as what was originally indicated in the TIF development agreement, which would have been December thirty-first of this year. Uh, so in discussions with Charter, uh pushing that back to December thirty-first of next year, uh two thousand and twenty-four, uh felt more uh attainable from them. Uh, so uh we have uh provided this amendment to the TIF development agreement, which essentially pushes all the milestones back one year. It doesn't change any of the financials of the TIF development agreement. Uh, it doesn't increase or decrease their incentive. It doesn't change any of the roles and responsibilities of the private sector or public sector uh stakeholders within this. It simply takes everything within the agreement and shifts it all one year. Uh, so their incentives don't kick in until their project is complete and they run through uh the ten years uh from that point out.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the amendment to uh the TIF District uh Agreement with Charter Next Generation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding use of the City of Milton Department of Public Works facility for a clean sweep site.
Uh, Rock County Land Conservation Department facilitates clean sweeps annually in Rock County. This year, excuse me, they're considering hosting a third site with the location being here in Milton. The proposed date and time is Friday, June twenty-third through from eleven AM to one PM, and they would use the Milton DPW facility. Um, there has been clean sweeps in Milton in the past. There's will be approximately six hours of staff time involved with setting up and taking down the clean sweep. City administration recommends approving the use of the public works facility as a clean sweep site.
And are we still donating some funds to Rock County to do this program?
Yeah, annually we donate funds to the clean sweep program.
And this maybe would gather more of our residents in there.
I think that would be a reasonable expectation. If it's local, people don't have to go to Janesville or Beloit where the other two locations are, so that would be the hope.
Any other questions or comments, Eric?
I just wanna make a motion, but
Can we um get that information out i- in quite a lot of detail so that people understand exactly what kind of chemicals that we're talking about?
Yeah, so Rock County has a bunch of information, um and and we'll share that, you know, as as we get closer to the clean sweep.
Maybe could we get it on the newsletter?
We'll have another newsletter going out on on or around May fifteenth, so we can put that in there too.
So I'd make a motion that we approve the use of the City of Milton Public Works Facility as a clean sweep site. Second.
To approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash ten?
That's a separate item.
Oh, that's a separate one. Sorry, okay, first one. There's a motion and a second. I skipped down. You're so judgy. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, number eighteen, which is what I wanted to talk about. Well, let's have Eric read this resolution since he's he's excited about being part of Public Works.
Such a joy. Whereas unwanted hazardous chemicals stored in homes, farms, and the workplace are a threat to human health and the environment. And whereas hazardous chemicals are not safe in normal refuse or recycling streams. And whereas safe disposal of hazardous chemicals is cost prohibitive to most residents of Rock County. And whereas the annual Rock County Clean Sweep Program provides safe and affordable disposal of hazardous chemicals from homes, farms, and eligible Rock County businesses. And whereas the Rock County Clean Sweep seeks support for competitive state grants and local funding. Now therefore, the Common Council of the City of Milton does hereby resolve the full support of the Rock County Clean Sweep Program, approved and adopted by the Common Council of the City of Milton this eighteenth day of April, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Your new president of the council read that so nicely. Well, you need to be adaptable in a leadership role. Discussion and possible action regarding effluent pump replacement at the wastewater treatment plant.
The uh effluent pump station has four pumps in the pump station. They're used to transport the treated wastewater to the Rock River out by uh Cashinon Sanitary District off of Kitter Road. Um, the there are uh four pumps in the station, and three of them are necessary for peak flows. They're used on a rotating cycle, so they're all operated um regularly. Um, we do normal maintenance on the pumps. Unfortunately, one of the pumps is um failing and at the point where uh repairs are no longer cost-effective. So staff obtained a couple of quotes for replacement of the pump. Municipal well and pump provided the lowest estimate for the work with the total being uh just under twenty thousand dollars. And the funding will be through the wastewater fund. Uh, City Administration recommends approving the quote for municipal well and pump for the effluent pump repairs.
Questions or comments?
How often do we need to do this?
Um, their staff has them looked at about every five years, kind of historically, but it's kind of an as-needed basis, similar to a lot of items at the treatment plant. It's it's an older plant with a lot of older equipment, so it's just trying to stay in front of things.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve the quote for municipal well and pump for the effluent pump repairs. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four committee and commission appointments. So um Jenny's gonna go over them. Let let's do the newspaper first. We have no newspaper. Discussion and possible action regarding the selection of the official city newspaper.
So each year, the Common Council has to approve a newspapers for legal notices and all election notices, including ballots to be used based on the information that we have. Now, the department administration says that the Janesville Gazette and the Milton Courier are the two most feasible options. So the in, if you remember from last year, I mean, we remember we switched from Milton Courier to the Janesville Gazette. Uh, so there, the downfall at that point was that there was going to be a possibility for increase because we worked with Town of Johnstown, Town of Milton, and Town of Harmony for election notices. Uh, since then, they have switched to the Janesville Gazette, and then we also are able to add our notices with the City of Janesville, reducing the cost. And then the other portion is that with Milton Courier and the Gazette, the difference is the timeframes for things like conditional use permits variances. When we have a publication that we need, we can put it in within two days, and the Milton Courier is one required one week prior to the publication. So in the memo, I put the informations for send date sending it to newspaper, publication dates, and then the earliest available date of meeting. So that is the the fiscal impact, the cost of publishing is very similar between the two.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve the Gazette to be the um official newspaper in City of Milton. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Alright, committee and commission appointments, which Jenny will go over, and if you're unhappy, schedule an appointment with me to discuss your grievance. schedule an appointment with me to discuss your grievances and to request a change of placement on committee, except for the president's committees are set in stone.
So we did it a little bit different this year. In your place, I have all of the committee appointments that we have currently and all of the new ones, and that's the full list. And so we'll be approving those this evening.
So is it easy enough to read for you to find what ones we're approving? And so what we we do, we do outreach for the committees. And you are able to do outreach to me if you need a committee replacement. So I didn't hear about anybody not wanting their current committees. And we heard back from other volunteers about their willingness to serve on the committees. And we also had a couple of new additions to committees for vacancies, but we still do have a couple vacancies and our middle school representative gets to move up to our high school representative. So we are going to be looking for a middle school representative on Parks and Rec.
And the current vacancies that we do have are Community Development Authority, Historic Preservation Commission, One on Plane Commission, and then also three on Ethics Ward currently.
And you have the option to not approve any too.
Make the motion to approve all of the appointments to the committees, commissions.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, congratulations on your continued appointments to committees. Committee reports.
Historic Preservation did not meet last week, so.
Gotcha. CDA did meet in between meetings and you saw the the results of their work. Anything else, Bill, on that that you could think of?
Just the fine work of in following up on properties that needed detention. We had a very thorough report of property by property. And in most cases, things have been resolved without fines and so on.
Yeah, we had we had quite a list of properties that we had sent notice to, you know, outside of the recommendations for the home improvement plan area of the meeting. We have done a really great job of working with our residents and helping them bring their properties up to code, so we've done a nice job with that. Anything else on any committees? Alright, staff reports. Ashley, do you want to go first?
The School District Art Show will end on Sunday, so we haven't come. Take a look at all the great arts. We have a week. We had our first meeting of a Sunday Chess Club on Sunday. We had twenty participants. We even had a master chess player there. So that'll be the Thursday, Sunday of every month from one thirty to three thirty. Myself and Jamie are going to be presenting at Lead the Way Conference in Madison next Tuesday about our collaborations with the Milton School District. And then Mariko's going to be presenting at the Wisconsin Association of Public Libraries Conference on Thursday about integrating media into programming. So we have a busy week next week.
That's very exciting. Anything updates on the Milton Youth Coalition that you can think of?
We have our night meeting coming up in May. Monday, May, one second, please.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay.
Should take that, take this opportunity.
So it's a night meeting on the fifteenth, on Monday, May fifteenth at five thirty, I believe, at Cross Point, right?
Cross Point Church, right.
Yes, the chapel, the chapel. So it's there. And then we have proms coming up on the twenty-ninth. And Coalition is hosting a pre-prom photo event at the college campus area. There's going to be a three sixty camera. Some photographers will take photos to other kids. There's backdrops and everything, so it's a really fun event.
Yes, and they'll be of those photos will be at no charge to the to the couples who come through there. And there's going to be a red carpet and just like a really, really fun opportunity, so that's exciting. And the evening meeting, we provide dinner for everybody that comes to that meeting too, so we're looking forward to that. Jenny?
Okay, so Open Book has started and will continue through May fifth. At this point, we have seventy-three assessments for this year that have gone out, so it's considered maintenance year compared to last year. It's seventy-five that we had last year. So and then Open Book will continue to May fifth and then Board of Review will be held on May twenty-fourth. And then the only other thing that I have is the alcohol licensing discussion that we are going to have on May fourth at five thirty. That will be at City Hall. So we'll have one more meeting for me to remind you of if you'd like to attend.
Okay. Mark E. How's snowplowing going?
Hopefully done. So the work along East High Street and State Highway fifty-nine for the water main construction has started. And then the only other item really I have to mention is that the DNR extended the deadline for the service lateral replacement program. So construction can take place on private lateral replacements through June thirtieth. So if you know anybody who's been pondering it and hasn't submitted an application yet, please encourage them to do so.
Alright, Kelsey?
I don't have any updates tonight.
Do we sell money? Okay, that's important. Inga?
On Tuesday last week, we had a number of people come to City Hall to meet with representatives from Gov HR. They gathered input from these various community members, both regional and locally, about what the community is looking for or needs in the next police chief because we still haven't convinced Scott to stay. So the plan is still to have someone onboard at least two weeks before Chief Markworth departs on November fourth. And I think we're on track to do that. We have a draft position announcement from Gov HR that I'm hoping to send approval to tonight so they can start the advertising process for that.
Yeah, and they also met with city staff and police staff too. Is there anyone else we're missing that they met with?
I feel like they met with a ton of people. They met with, started off, they met with a number of patrol staff. They met with command staff. They met with the Police Commission, various representatives from organizations. They met with the leadership team. A lot of people throughout the day.
Yeah, they did. I feel like and I met with them for an hour. I feel like they did a really thorough job. I it's been such a long time since we've had to hire a chief and I just can't remember. I can't remember the process being. I don't know. It was just a long time ago. Guess I'm too old to be mayor. Chief?
I can't remember either, so if that makes you feel any better. It is tornado and severe weather awareness week in the state of Wisconsin this week. So the statewide tornado drills will be held on Thursday. Not every community is required to do a siren test during the statewide tornado drill. I do not know if Rock County Emergency Management is going to be doing the sirens or not, but if they do, you know why. We've already had a ton of severe weather already this spring, so make sure you have your weather radios and your cell phones and all of those things to get your announcements in many different ways. The actual sirens are meant to warn people outside. They are not meant to wake you up from a dead sleep and warn you of a tornado. That's where you have your weather radio and your cellphone with the Emergency Activation Service attached to it, so.
So you have to take responsibility.
Yeah. It's a good way to be safe. And Ready Wisconsin is a website through Department of Emergency Management. Has a lot of good information on a lot of planning and preparedness, not just for severe weather, but all sorts of hints and advice for how you can build a resilient family plan to be ready for just one event.
Yep. I follow them on social media and they have a lot of good information. Al?
Man, that was a quick transition. A few weeks ago, at the council meeting, indicated that I was been selected to do certification for business advising. I completed that certification, so now I am. So Inga and I should probably talk about how we can get help get the word out about that. Other than that, you know, kind of business as usual, just have, you know, a lot of development activity again, as always going on. Got a number of conversations in the works about a number of residential subdivisions that haven't even, you know, kind of come off the ground yet. But, you know, things continue to move along very nicely. The other thing in regards to Mark's comments, notices went out to folks along Madison Avenue, North Clear Lake regarding that upcoming project. That's going to be a major project that unfortunately is going to be, you know, rather disruptive over the summer, but we have course, of course, because we're the City of Milton, we have protected the Fourth of July and made sure that that goes off without a hitch, so.
Except for the weather.
Well, we can't control that.
We don't know about the weather, but yeah, so you'll probably get a lot of annoying, you know, it's going to be annoying and and difficult, but that that roadwork needs to be done. We've heard a lot of complaints about it. We've invested our ARPA funds around that, so although it's going to be a hassle, it'll be worth the effort.
And will we have any extra police force for the summer school at that end? Because it just seems to me like for during the summer school time, we always have a lot of traffic down there.
Summer school, like during the four weeks, the three weeks of summer school? And traffic down where specifically?
For the construction area. On Madison Avenue.
I don't know that I'm planning anything extra for that. I'll keep it in mind though.
So no, none of the, just on, okay.
East, North Side, and the high school.
Oh, and and maybe the middle school too, but not at West.
And we do have crossing guards that work the summers, and so I'll have a crossing guard at East, at North Side, and at the middle school to help with crossing kids, so there's that.
Alright, anything else for anyone? Alright, team building. Well, since we have a new member of council, which is really exciting, we're going to do, this is very common, I'm sure you've all done it, two truths. Two truths and one lie. Only Charlotte, no. So everybody writes down two truths about themselves. This is how we get to know each other. This is the why in team building, so we can be a cohesive group. So we can make fun of each other in a fun and loving way. So you write down two truths about yourself and one lie, and we have to decide out of those three things. And we haven't done this in a long time, so there's a lot of lying that's available, right?
I think only three of us were on council at that time when we lasted. I remember that thing. Maybe four.
Okay. Some of us have to write it down. Oh. We could have somebody else read it. No, the council president does. It's not the council, just the council. It is everybody. Team building has always been everybody.
I'll go first. I don't care if it makes it easier for people.
No. I I'm giving you all the prep time that you need. How are we doing? How much time do you need? Alright, who wants to? Go first.
I do. Let's get out of the.
Okay, okay. Just wait.
It's not going to be that good, I promise, but maybe, I don't know. Is that okay?
Okay, go.
Okay, so I'm going to say my favorite movie is Rocky, the original. I was married in two thousand nine and I have a cat.
Any guesses? Well, okay, who thinks Rocky's the lie? Who thinks married in two thousand and nine with a kid? Is that what you said? Just married? Who thinks that's a lie? Yeah. And who thinks the cat is? Alright, Mark, you got that out of the way.
This one's easy too. I went to UW-Plattville. I love the Junction Water Tower and I love baseball.
Last one.
Okay, we gotta go through them. Okay. Who thinks Plattville is the lie? Who thinks the water tower is the lie? Who thinks baseball is the lie? Okay, who's not?
I'll go.
Yeah.
Alright. So I once was attacked by a bear. I, I, yup. I, oh, shoot, I had, I I received the national award when I was a senior in high school in Orlando, Florida. And I have visited all fifty states.
Alright, who thinks the lie is attacked by a bear? Okay, received a national award. Fifty states. Okay.
That's true.
Yes, yes, I I was attacked by a bear. It had to be shot.
Oh my god.
Right in front of my face.
What, where were you? Okay, who wants to go next? President?
I was the yearbook photo editor in high school. I love I love dogs and I played football in high school.
Okay, okay, who thinks he was the yearbook photo editor? Okay, okay, who thinks he was a yearbook photo editor?
Wait, that's false.
That's false. Who thinks that's the lie? So that's the lie? Okay. Loves dogs is a lie? Play football is a lie? Okay, what is it? Oh, so you should be taking pictures for us. Very nice. Okay, who else, who else wants to go?
I'll go. I'm a Colonel in the Second Wisconsin Reenacting Organization. I have two cats and a dog. And I have been to Denmark three times.
Okay, is Colonel the lie? Eh, uh, cats and a dog.
I'm gonna say you fudge with the numbers.
Denmark.
I don't have a dog.
I knew you, I'm like, I, I didn't, I'm like, maybe he got a dog. Oh, go.
I, as a child, I played the piano. I, I make a good pot of chili.
How would you know this?
Subjective.
Go ahead, go ahead. And your third?
Um, I used to drive a Buick Skyhawk.
Okay, piano. Um, who thinks, okay, so no one thinks piano's a lie, you make a good pot of chili. I probably wouldn't like it. You used to drive a Buick Skyhawk. That's the truth. What's the lie?
That I played the piano. I played the organ.
Oh. Okay, okay, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go now.
So Linda has to bring chili to the community recognition picnic.
Okay, um, I jumped out of a plane. I played the piano. And I bought my first piece of property when I was nineteen. Who thinks I jumped out of a plane? It's a lie. Um, I play the piano. Um, I bought my first property when I was nineteen. Okay, I did jump out of a plane. Twice. I went skydiving twice and, almost last night. Um, I used to play the piano, but I don't anymore. And I did buy my house when I was nineteen. I couldn't believe that you had played the piano too. Yup, okay. Bill, you wanna go next?
Sure. Uh, I'll give you my work history. Um, I was a short order cook. I ran a bookstore. I managed a motel.
Okay, who thinks the cook is a lie? Managed a bookstore. Ran a motel. Okay.
The bookstore is the lie. A mustard library, that's a free bookstore.
Yeah, yeah. Alright. Who's next? Okay, Teresa.
Uh, I played piano from, I don't know, about four years old till freshman high school. I then played the, uh, organ from eighth grade to graduated high school. And then got to play, uh, electric guitar.
So we have to figure out which instrument you didn't play. Okay, you and Bill worked together on this, or what? Okay, who thinks the piano is the lie? Who thinks the organ is the lie? Who thinks the guitar is the lie?
Just can't see research.
No electric guitar, okay. Alright, who's next?
I can go.
Okay.
Um, I love road tripping. My favorite drink is hot tea, not cold tea. And I have two children, twenty-eight and eleven, are their ages.
See, this is why we do this, so now we know Charlotte's- Alright, um, road tripping is the lie. Okay, hot tea is a lie. We all know it's, we all know it's wine.
Charlotte's my bar.
It's common. Um, two children, eleven and-
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Who thinks that's a lie? Okay. So you won't be going to the Milton House TV fundraiser?
I like the popping circumstance, since I go to TV.
Bring your own.
There are other things that sort of look like tea and you put in it.
Kelsey and Scott and Larry and Mark.
Mark what? Max?
There's another Mark. That other Mark. Go Larry. Can you cut chili though? Okay, so, um, Latin and German. Who thinks that's the lie? How about motorcycling? And cooking? Okay, Max, do you got two truths and a lie? Do you want us to come back to you, or are you ready? Okay. Scott, Mark, Kelsey, Jenny? Oh, just when you want me to forget you. Inga?
Okay. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay, so, what? So I was on one of the first all-girls hockey teams in the state of Wisconsin in the mid-nineties. Uh, this year is my ninth wedding anniversary, and I played the cello from fourth grade through senior year of high school.
Okay, hockey. Is that the lie? Ninth wedding anniversary. Cello.
This is my tenth wedding anniversary on May eighteenth.
Okay. Okay, Kelsey.
I have been a frequent bowler since I was five. I've never been out of the country. And I balance my own checkbook monthly.
Is bowling the lie? Never out of the country? Did you say you've never been out of the country? I don't know. Uh, balances own checkbook. You don't balance your own checkbook? Oh gosh. Was that not on an interview question for her? I feel so much better about my life. The truth comes out. Alright. Max? Okay, go. Okay, is fourteen the lie? Um, likes cooking. Two dogs. Because we've never seen you at the park cleaning the dog poop up. Okay, okay. Nice work, Max. Nick, you'll fit in just fine. We need to find another committee for you besides Parks and Rec. I hear Public Works is really fun and it's gonna meet monthly now. Okay, that's a good one. Alright, so is it just? Mark and Jenny? And Scott. Mark and Jenny and Scott. Scott's going.
Um, so I crewed for a hot air balloon company. Uh, one of my favorite drinks is, uh, Seven Up with green olives. And I've decided not to retire November fourth of twenty twenty.
Does anybody think that number three is the truth? You like Seven Up and olives.
Really interesting.
And you know- And, so, we can have a hot air balloon here for your retirement party, is that, and you'll take us for rides? Fun, fun, fun. So now it's down, Mark's gonna go next? He thinks that my short-term memory will relieve Jenny of her. Go, Mark.
Alright, well, this is, I like playing golf. I like to ice fish. I like sauerkraut.
Okay, um, who thinks playing golf is a lie? Who thinks ice fishing is a lie? Who thinks sauerkraut is a lie?
Pretty mixed group.
Yeah, yeah. I don't like playing golf, because I really suck.
And here I thought you were a fair-weather fisher. I can, don't remember you talking about going ice fishing. Well, that's a, you know, you know, attorneys, they're good liars. He's got a piano in his shanty, though. Alright, Jenny, it's all you.
I was trying to come up with something interesting, so I've never played this before. So, I have lived sixteen different places in Wisconsin. And when I was a child, one of my stories was published. And then I was a Harvard Milk Days princess. Was wearing a crepe paper dress.
I don't know, Scott, you're pretty good at interrogating people. Okay, tell me your first one again.
Sixteen places.
Sixteen places, this is the lie? You've only lived in Edgerton in Florida half the time. Um, okay, I can't remember the-
Six, I lived-
Published.
Sixteen places. One of my stories was published when I was a child. And I was a Harvard Milk Days princess.
Who thinks publishing is the lie? Harvard Milk Days princess. Alright.
That was, I was not a Milk Days princess. I lost.
Oh, so you have lived sixteen places?
I have moved, I've been in three counties, but I have moved sixteen times, in sixteen different places.
Now, now you have to tell us every place that you lived, and a different team building. So next time, you all have to list all the different places you've lived. Alright. Next meeting date is May second. Oh, and we have our community recognition picnic. I just wanna get this date out here, May twenty-fifth. So put that on your calendar, and all of those, um, recognition recommendations have been turned in. Any other upcoming dates? We have a food truck rally, what's that date?
Sunday, May seventh, and the time has changed, it's eleven to three this time around.
Okay, Sunday, May seventh, so get that on your calendar. Is there a first community days coming up in Milton? Charlotte says May twelfth. Um, anything else that we can think of? Uh, Civil War Living History Days is in May?
May nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first. I'll tell more details next month.
Okay, um, what else? Memorial Day weekend is coming up. There'll be a special speaker Memorial Day at the park. The president's going to be speaking, so that's exciting. And any other dates that I've missed? Okay, I don't, like, somebody texted me about Citywide Garage Sales. Is that in June though, usually?
Yeah, the first Saturday in June.
The first Saturday in June?
That one guy put out the, something on Facebook and asked people to give them the information, so you could add them to his map.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, ci- citywide run and sales have historically happened the first Saturday in June. It's not a city function.
Right.
It was generally coordinated through the courier, but now a gentleman on Facebook has taken over, yes, creating the, the map of places.
Well, good for J. R. Me getting civically, community. Yes, yes. So, okay. Anything else? Wine and something and trivia at the gathering place. So, keep looking on Facebook for different events. There's a lot going on in May. It's gonna be a fun, fun month, I hope. Spring stays. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is Charlotte making that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Alright, see.
You do.
Yeah, sign your oath of office before you leave. Wait, one minute. We're also gonna do a picture, holding our Stand Against Racism signs. We usually get together and do that picture and send it to the YWCA. So if you can gather in front to do our picture, and then we'll be set to go.